Board as it conducts its official business. Persons who willfully interrupt, disrupt, or cause disturbances at an official meeting may be directed to leave by the presiding officer. Members of the audience should show respect for the speakers by refraining from loud comments or other disruptions. Disruptions by any person or persons of a public meeting will be subject to action in accordance with North Carolina General Statute 143-31817. We do have a few members who are not with us today, but we do have a quorum. And so at this point, let's stand and recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So at this point in our meeting, we have our superintendent's comments and the superintendent update. And this will be our last official superintendent update and comments by our beloved interim superintendent, Dr. Bridges. Dr. Bridges, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Vice Chair Hagerty and members of the board and Attorney Malone. Just a few comments and updates. September the 15th through October the 15th is National Hispanic Heritage Month, a time for our students and staff to recognize and celebrate the histories, cultures, contributions of American citizens whose ancestors came from Spain, Mexico, the Caribbean, and Central and South America. Hispanic students make up about 20% of our population, and Hispanic Heritage Month provides an excellent opportunity to increase culture, understanding, and appreciation across our diverse school system. September is also Attendants Awareness Month, an opportunity to recognize the importance of our students being in school every day. Our schools, working in concert with our social workers and other support service staff, prioritize seeking out students when they have unexcused absences and ensure that we have an opportunity to provide the resources to make sure that they're back in school and learning. I also want to acknowledge the increase in academic proficiency and four-year graduation rate that you likely saw a couple of weeks ago in the paper. Our overall proficiency rate on state tests made another significant jump toward pre-pandemic levels. In fact, proficiency rates were higher than pre-pandemic rates in certain subject areas, including English II, Math III, 8th grade math, and 4th grade reading. Meanwhile, our four-year graduation rate increased 89.9%. That is particularly impressive when we consider students in the class of 2023, where 9th graders when the pandemic struck, March of 2020. During the board's work session, staff presented the draft, the first draft, of the 2024-2025 Enrollment Plan. The information was presented so the board could provide feedback, and we'll start developing Draft Two with the goal of having a final product by November 21st. The board also received information on staffing for the system. The field rate for our teachers is 97%, instructional assistance is 95%, and bus drivers is 64%. And that number is based on us needing 882 bus drivers to run an effective and efficient system. As of July 1st, we have hired 2,152 teachers, 309 instructional assistants, and overall 3,268 candidates have been employed. Thank you, Ms.
Thank you, Dr. Bridges. So to start off our board comments tonight, I want to start with some positive news. Leesville Road's Ben Kohlstad, the football coach, was earlier this month the Deer Park Water North Carolina High School Football Coach of the Year. So we're all very proud of Coach Kohlstad at Leesville Road. Some of you might know Coach Kohlstad when he was a middle school coach out in Eastern Wake, or when he coached at Sanderson or at Cary High School. He took the pride to the state championship game in 2019, and we've had a couple of games canceled this year, but it looks, the team looks good and might contend this year, too. So congratulations to Coach Kohlstad on the statewide recognition and good luck to the team. Also, Mr. Hershey had talked about the RAMP awards and our school counselors at our last meeting, and so I wanted to highlight Nancy Snyder Stavarakis, a product of Wake County Public Schools, by the way, and Terry Armstrong, counselors at Mills Park Elementary School. They met the criteria to receive the North Carolina School Counseling Diamond Award, and their school is also eligible for recognition as a RAMP school. So this is another great recognition. We've been talking a lot about student services, most recently in our student achievement meetings with Chair Waters, and I'm hoping that we can learn more about the important role some of these student support professionals play. And I think this is also a good transition for an important item about other mental and social well-being professionals that I need to talk about that's a little more, a little more time-sensitive. So over the past two weeks, I've had many parents from Leadmine Road Elementary School reach out about the 4th grader who brought a loaded gun to school. And as you would imagine, this shook many members of the school community, families and staff, and even though it was handled well by the staff regarding diffusing the situation, regarding communication with the families, families are still shaken, but they're reaching out, they're offering constructive preventative solutions. And so I wanted to address some of those today. I support the families and what they're advocating for, and so I wanted to use my time to advocate how we might be able to move forward together from this. First, we know too many guns fall into the wrong hands. We've had members of this board lift that issue up at many meetings now. Ms. Caulfield, Dr. Ring, Ms. Edmonds, Ms. Waters, I think I've heard everyone raise this issue. So you know we're all committed to doing what we can do. You know, if you own a firearm, make sure that is, it is safely secured. Firearms are now the leading cause of death, of injury-related death for children and youth in this state. Gun thefts are on the rise. Securing firearms is very important, and we need to continue to push that out to the community, whether it's at PTA meetings, whether there's a community meetings, PTA meetings. Secure your firearm, firearm with a lock or in a safe. Keep it secure. Prevent gun thefts, especially from parked vehicles. We are seeing a rise in crime in parking lots. It should be instinct to most folks to lock your door, but we're busy, sometimes we forget. I would advocate not storing the gun in your car, but if you do, please make sure to lock it. And then finally, make sure children and others can't access your fire alarms. We have free gun locks that are available in our community from so many different sources. Again, we've heard our board members talk about gun locks and safe storage. You know, we can get these distributed through a number of resources. I'm a little bit spread out, so I don't have my prop to show you, but I brought one of the locks today. I got it from Project Child Safe in coordination with local law enforcement. Our Wake County Sheriff's Department, most municipal police agencies, they will make these locks available to you. Heck, most gun dealers and gun shops will make these locks available to you. All you have to do is ask. So again, these are available in the community, and we just need to keep pushing out safe But the idea, the concern that's come to me most often from parents has been, from Leadmine Road Elementary specifically, has been the need for a full-time social worker at the school. So there have been assignment changes at the school recently, and Leadmine Road now is, Leadmine Elementary is now a Title I school, and it shares a social worker with Baileywick Elementary, which is also a Title I school. We know that the school district does not have adequate funding to put a social worker in every school. And so we have to prioritize. We have an acuity model that looks at the needs of each school and allocates for these. And every year since I've been on the Board of Education, we've gotten inadequate funding from the state, and we've gone to our county, and every year, the county has been able to provide us additional funds for counselors, school nurses, social workers, psychologists, but our ratios are still too low. And I really think this incident is a perfect example of why just providing one full-time social worker and at least every one of our Title I schools is a modest and a reasonable goal. As we set our goals for next year's budget, because this is a long-term solution where I can fix anything overnight, if we look at this, if we look at our schools, if you keep that equity lens in mind, having this goal for providing the, for prioritizing these social workers in the Title I schools, I think should be an important funding request. And I hope that our staff and our new leadership is listening, because I'd like to see us all get behind this. It's a long-term solution. We need one in the short term. Again, I do want to thank the staff for how they've handled the solution, both our principal at Leadmine Road Elementary, her staff, and the district staff. I know that they've had crisis counselors available to staff. Some people have taken advantage of it. Some families may not know these are out there. I want to make sure that continued access to care continues. Again, I'd love to see if we could increase the availability of social workers in rotation at Leadmine Road and other Title I schools, at least in the interim until we can find the funding for permanent full-time social workers in these positions. And again, you know, I'm just going to ask, I'd like to ask everyone to reach out to state and county officials. You know, please let state officials know of these important ongoing needs, more important, I think, than casino gambling, but I'll just leave that out there. You know, let the state officials know these are important resources we need in our community. And let our county officials know how appreciative we are, that they have been able to provide incremental funding to slowly improve on these ratios and get us a little bit closer and a little bit closer to those goals. We shouldn't have to rely on Wake County to make, to pay for these basic human services, but we do, and right now, they're a lifeline for many families in our community. And so we need to say thank you, and we need to make them know how important their investment in our schools really is right now. So thank you. At this time, I'll turn it over to other board members for comments. We'll start with Ms. Waters.
Thank you, Vice Chair Hagerty, for lifting up those really important ways that we can all advocate for more social workers. They are very important in our schools and also your remarks around gun safety. So thank you for opening up in that manner. Very important. And thank you also for acknowledging our amazing interim superintendent, who I know is quite humble, but has done an amazing job of serving as a very strong leader with a quiet humility, and so really appreciate the honor of being able to work with him and sit beside him for the last several weeks. And so I know he will be making impact in other areas across the country and states, but I will hope that we will continue to have the opportunity to interact, because your wisdom and insight has been invaluable to us. So thank you. And I have had a wonderful time in District Four recently, and I wanted to say thank you to Dr. Counsel, who's the Northeastern Area Superintendent. She invited me out to visit two very special schools in District Four, Phillips High School and Longview School. Those schools are really important and are designed to support our students in really unique ways who need, I'm in a different setting. And just want to lift up Phillips High School and Principal Gupton. I really love being there. It is a great school for students who need a little bit more intentional support in a smaller environment, and they really do a great job of making sure that all their students are seen, heard, and supported. And so I am so excited about all the things that are happening in the school community. And one of the things that was really unique was their intentionality to make sure that all students are able to participate in clubs. And so they have clubs designed throughout the day so that every student can be able to engage in those club settings. And so they also give a lot of attention to the input from the students, and so just really grateful for all that goes on at Phillips High School. And then Longview School with Principal Harris, he has taken over as the leader in just over a year. He has also brought his humble servant leadership style to the school community, and the educators in the building really love what they do, and you can really feel it as you walk around the school community. So those two schools are really special and doing incredible work. And also want to lift up our counselors again. We've had some good presentations and good work around what is going on across the district. And I was very fortunate to have been invited by Mr. Chuck Small of Inlow High School to learn about their work, and the school counselors presented to me and allowed me to see some of the strategies that they have implemented to help support students, particularly around 9th grade promotion. And so that is important work that is going on in the school community there, and so thank you to all the counselors at Inlow for that opportunity to engage. And then I also had a chance to visit Riverbend Middle School. They have a new principal, Principal Michelle Bell. She's not new to the district, but is new to the school, and we had a really good one-on-one time to talk. A lot of times when I visit schools, I typically tour, but we sat down and had a great time just to get to know each other and her vision for the school. And she is so positive in her disposition and keenly committed to the academic success of the students in the building. And so I really enjoyed getting to know her, and I look forward to seeing great things from the school community as the year goes on. And lastly, I want to give you a save the date for the District Four BAC. Our first meeting will be on October the 26th, and more details will be available soon, but please put a hole in your calendar. We'll have some important updates, and it'll be a good opportunity for us to get together in District Four. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Waters. Next, we'll go to Ms. Edmonds.
Thank you, and I also appreciate your comments about gun safety and safe storage. Thank you for that. Thank you to all of the staff and community members who came to my BAC last night. We had a great discussion about transportation, our new visitor management system, and the use of AI in schools. Thanks to Teresa Williams, Kendrick Scott, and Allison Reed, who all came and presented. On September 7th, I was honored to represent the Board at the State Board of Education STEM Awards. Congratulations to Vernon Malone, College and Career Academy, Combs Elementary, Reedy Creek Middle School, Southeast Raleigh High School, who all won awards, and to James Austin, a math teacher at Millbrook High School. He was recognized as a finalist for the 2023 Presidential Award for Excellence in Math and Science Teaching. On September 8th, I was at Middle Creek Elementary for their picnic with a pal. I was paired with a set of second-grade twins, brother and sister, and we joined other groups and, of families and friends for a picnic lunch outside by the playground. These children were kind and welcoming, even though they'd never met me, and warmed up to me rather quickly, and we had a great time together talking about pets and what they were learning in school. And we each had the school lunch, all three of us. Been a long time since I had school lunch pizza, but it was very good. That same night, I attended my first high school football game as a board member, Athens versus Apex Friendship. Athens was not the victor in that game, but it was a perfect night for football, and I was able to visit with several staff members and parents, which was great. Finally, I want to comment on what we expect to see in the state budget. Teachers may only see about a 7% raise over the two years, and we know that that's not enough. Millions more taxpayer dollars per year will be diverted to private schools, and these funding decisions are a choice. It's a choice to invest in school privatization versus public education. It is a choice to not comply with the Leandro ruling. It is a choice to undervalue teachers, and it is a choice to attack trans kids. We, the people, have choices in who we elect to the state legislature, those responsible for state funding for public education and policy. So if we want a better budget, a better state budget, we must choose leaders that truly value public education, and we're about a year away from having that opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Edmonds. Next, we'll hear from Dr. Ring.
Thank you, and I echo the sentiments of Dr. Bridges. I really appreciate the kind of quick and sensitive responses you have made to a lot of the concerns that have been brought up to, to me and to other board members as well. So, thank you. Last night, the District Three BAC had a, met at Wakefield High School. I would like to thank Principal Brazil and the Wakefield High School PTA for hosting the meeting. We heard from Joe McKenna, Assistant Superintendent of Special Education Services, along with some of the senior staff members, who gave us an overview of Special Education Services and how they fit into our current strategic plan. They were especially proud of the progress that they have made in providing job training opportunities in the community for students and the Occupational Course of Study Program. As you know, with COVID, things kind of got behind in a way in terms of finding those resources, but they've really picked up again. The goal is for them to be able to seek meaningful and gainful employment upon graduation. Right now, their greatest challenge, as with many of the departments, is filling the vacancies in special ed classrooms. And in their situation, the need for them is especially urgent because of the students' need for more personalized attention and teaching. I think we all came away with a better appreciation of the important work that the teachers and the instructional assistants are doing. So if you or someone you know have the passion to teach and a big heart, I would ask you to consider joining the special ed team. And if you know of any company or organization that wishes to partner with WCPSS to provide more job training opportunities for the OCS program, please contact me, and I can relay that message to the appropriate people. I want to remind everyone that this weekend is the Centennial Celebration for Millbrook Magnet High School. The 100th Anniversary Celebration will kick off this Friday with a homecoming game at 7:00 PM. There will be a special parade recognizing graduates and alumni from past decades. And then on Saturday, September 23rd, from 9:00 to 11:30 AM, there will be a special program recounting the school's history and its impact on the community. And then to top it all off, there will be a special dedication of Dana King Way in honor of our beloved principal, who made such an impact in the community and in the lives of the students and the staff that knew her. Finally, this past Sunday was Constitution Day. Thank you for people who reminded me last time, which commemorates the signing of the Constitution of the United States on September 17, 1787. And as someone who immigrated here as a child and had to work to get my citizenship, I had to learn what the Constitution and the Bill of Rights mean. Their purpose is to preserve our God-given rights in order to protect us from tyrannical control of any kind. And as a parent, I want to maintain my rights and my children's education and to raise them in a way consistent with my values. I also want to make sure that my children don't take their freedoms for granted. So I encourage you all to stay vigilant and to take an inventory of what this country and your freedoms mean to you. As President Ronald Reagan once said, "Freedom is never more than one generation away from extinction." We didn't pass it to our children in the bloodstream. It must be fought for, protected, and handed on for them to do the same, or one day, we will spend our sunset years telling our children and our children's children what it was once like in the United States where men were free." Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Ring. I see you going up to the mic there, Mr. Hershey. You ready?
I am. I actually typed out my comments for the first time. So first, Happy 919 Day, which is a thing in Raleigh, because it is September 19th. Quick, no, I know, it was all over the internet today. So District Six will be having our first BAC meeting October 2nd, which happens to coincide with Dr. Taylor's first full day, so should he not have any plans that day? We will be at Millbrook Elementary School. We'll be discussing the new All Kids Ride program that I know is going to be in a few of our elementary schools for the first time this year, and we'll be getting a safety and security update, and that'll be from 12 to 1 at Millbrook Elementary School on October 2nd. I know it's just passed, but I hope everyone that celebrated Rosh Hashanah has a good and sweet New Year, and I hope everyone fasting coming up for Yom Kippur this next Sunday night to Monday night has a safe and easy fast. I'd like to thank the Boys and Girls Club for inviting me to their Breakfast of Champions yesterday morning. Two shout-outs to people who recognized. One is a Vernon Malone graduate, Ramani, who was honored and is now attending North Carolina A&amp;T. Another to Cat Red, who started the gobbler run in Wake Forest. She started that in 2006, and I took my wrestling team to participate in the early years, so it was a pleasure to see her honored, and I know a lot of students and our families up there enjoy that event every Thanksgiving Day. Last night, I attended the North Carolina College of Education Gen Z on Teaching, on the Teaching Profession Event. Two of the students, on the panel of five, graduated from our schools, Kaia Connor and Olivia Folito. I apologize if I mispronounced those names. They were very impressive. I want to highlight a couple of repeated themes that they had, that the entire panel had, and this is, as somebody who coaches and officiates, this is for all parents. The desire to see the profession supported by parents was brought up multiple times, and it was articulated quite well that the harm that recent state laws have on the ability of teachers to communicate and connect with students is a concern to the next generation of teachers. Next, a sarcastic thank you to the Atlantic Coast Conference, the ACC, for, quite frankly, screwing over our schools. There are two North Carolina State football games coming up, one on this Friday and then on the following Friday. And you may ask why I'm bringing this up. Well, Friday Night Football is a time for our fans and our parents to highlight and to see our players, cheerleaders, band members, drill team members, and our student trainers. And as importantly, these events help us fund, they're very important to the athletic department. It is going to take money out of our athletic departments as people go to the NC State game. These Friday night games help athletic departments fund the entire, entire year for our athletic programs. This is common in high schools across the country as well as colleges. The revenue generating sports are important, so it does irritate me quite a bit that the ACC is stepping on our schools like this. It also puts a strain on our officials as a, as official, a lot of officials help work the NC State game, so it makes it tough to cover all the high school games that night, and we do our best to do so in Wake County. Two more items. This is long for me, I know. Last board meeting, a question was asked about flags in our schools, and we received an email from Dr. Bridges referencing our citizenship policy, 3530. One item, and I spoke with Vice Chair Hagerty about this, and it is, by the way, it is National Registered Vote Day. That's where this is going. We may at one time have had more nonpartisan vote registering in our schools, and I would encourage us to get back to that either in policy or in practice or both, and to use either through nonpartisan groups or, and/or peer-to-peer student-led groups. I think if we are serious about talking about citizenship and all that comes with it, getting our kids registered and informed to vote is really important. Lastly, wrap this up, I want to thank Dr. Randy Bridges. I appreciate our conversations. I appreciate your, the way you've communicated, your advice. I really took to heart that you said, you know, I go to our schools all the time, but you said, "Get out into the, to the community elsewhere," and I hope that you've seen that I've done that over the last couple of months and really taken that to heart, and will continue to do that. I appreciate your leadership, and I'm grateful to have met you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hershey. We'll come back around this way. Ms. Caulfield.
Thank you. And I'd like to add to what you said, Mr. Hershey, that also helps our students shine going to football. It allows them to shine, and allows our community to come together. So it is, I understand your scorn. First, I want to say thank you. I mean, I want to say I'm really excited for our new superintendent, Dr. Taylor, to start with us soon, but I'm really sad that this is our last official board meeting with Dr. Bridges. It has really been an honor to serve on the board with you these last few months. It's only been three months, but you've made a big impact on us. While I found you to be very quiet in the beginning, I realized that the mindfulness and the care that you took in talking, in taking things into consideration, understanding all the parts, and then giving us some great feedback, then, and things that we can consider are very important. Thank you for being with us this last few months, and I do really hope you enjoy your golf and every once in a while, give us a shout-out. I want to thank you, Chris, for, Mr. Hagerty, for addressing the gun safety. It is important to note that most, most of the incidents where the guns are involved in these cases do come from home. It is a community effort to keep our children safe, so please do your part. Mr. Hagerty said it quite well, so we don't need to address it anymore, but please do pay attention to the resources that are available out there. A few announcements, September September 20th, from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM, Wendell is hosting a Whole Health Resource and Family Fun Day at Wendell Community Center on West Third Street. Our first District Board Advisory Committee is scheduled for October 2nd, and we will be hosted by Roseville Middle School. Our next tea time, or my next tea time, will be October 25th at 41 North Coffee Street, sorry if I'm saying that wrong, in Wendell, and I'd love to hear from our community. Please come out and join me. I will be there from 11 to 1. And I also wanted to acknowledge Hispanic Heritage Month. I know that's an important month to many of our families. This week, our county commissioners recognized the importance of vape shops being near our schools. I want to thank them for their efforts. I've been working with our mayors and town staff in District 1 on ordinances against new vape shops near our schools. Vaping and safety is, around our children is very important to me. It was reported in 2022 to 2023 that there was 1,044 violations in our district, a pretty significant increase from the year prior. This includes several dozen times that fire departments get called out to our schools. That's even just in one school. Not only is vaping a health risk, this is also disruptive, not to mention the staff and resources required to answer these calls. We continue to hear about difficulties that staff have with vaping in our schools. Being that close to schools makes it easier to obtain access. The commissioners plan to bring that new rule to vote next month. So again, thank you for teaming up with us on this. Starting May 25th of 1787, 39 men went back and forth and ended with compromise of ideas to bring us the Plan of House, Senate, popular vote, elections, and Electoral College, and one of the most important documents in history, the United States Constitution. This past Sunday, September 17th, was Constitution Day and Citizenship Day. The day commemorates the signing of our United States Constitution in Philadelphia, Pennsylvania in 1787. And Dr. Wing pointed out some great points about this important day, so I will just leave it with his well-said words. Part of the policy, I know, is for us to have a flag in all of our classrooms, and I am happy to say that while I went around from Meet the Teacher, just kind of snuck a peek around, and I happened to see a lot of flags standing, so it made me feel really, really good. Since we were not here for 9/11, I wanted to take a minute to recognize all the families, friends, and colleagues of all the many people affected by that chilling day on September 11th. Having been in New York, I can still remember the fall crisp air and the very clear sky that day. I had just arrived at work when my boss called us into the conference room and tuned into the news. It was a day that I will never forget. I just heard a student ask, "Why do we talk about this every year?" So it's a great question. History is an important part of who we are, where we were, and the very things we learned from to encourage us, like folk laws and generational stories passed down, but also our scars that teach us where we do not want to be. We learn from mistakes in hopes that we can keep us, it will keep us the great country that America is. September 11th was a day for our nation that stopped dead in their tracks, it paused in grief, but the very hurt that still scorons our families also made us pull together and become a very strong nation. And for a while, it was amazing. Families grew stronger, neighbors bonded more, strangers reached out shortly after I was stuck in New York City during the blackout. I'll admit, I was very scared at first, because the wounds were still fresh, but once we knew we were safe, the chilling, the shuffling calmed, the streets broke out with crowds laughing, playing music, and people in the streets. Nobody could go anywhere, we were stuck, so we had to stay there overnight. So this was a night that New York City was glowing only by candlelight and so quiet with the street, no street and no air traffic around us. Stores handed out food and drinks, people were sharing with each other, the sound of guitars and violas filled the streets. I was stuck overnight that day on somebody's couch, unable to go home with my own family. But in awe of how people came together, they united. It was incredible to see the camaraderie. I meant, I mentioned the blackout because 9/11 changed people. It hurt, but it brought Americans together too. I was a proud American that day and all the days that followed. This is why we pause, why we recognize 9/11 each and every year, why we continue to pray for those brave souls, and why we stand up for America, why we need to stand together. May we never forget.
Thank you, Ms. Caulfield. So Ms. Johnson-Hossler.
Thank you, and thank you for recognizing 9/11 four short years later. My daughter was born on 9/11, and this year on her birthday, she actually got to be in New York City on her birthday on 9/11, and she can see from her room, her dorm room, the tower, and it was beautifully lit up in red and blue as a reminder of the sacrifices of those that we lost, but also for the many people who were in New York City that day, who, to your point, still very much so are connected through tragedy, but certainly also understand the need to celebrate the gifts of life that we all still can stand here and be grateful for each other as a country. And so that was actually the first picture she sent me on her birthday, was not all the work I went through to get her birthday stuff, but the photo that she could see from her room of the memorial. Indeed, will remain a special day. Also, on that day, she turned 18, and so today is National Voter Registration Day, and I have to give kudos to our schools who do a great job of ensuring our students who are 17 in our schools are registered to vote. So the beautiful thing on 9/11 is her name also showed up in the North Carolina voter database, just based on the work that was done in her high school. And so again, thanks to all the people in our schools who ensure that our students are indeed understanding and recognizing their civic duty. So the beauty is, I was scrambling like, "Oh, I have to get you a form," and she's like, "Oh, I did that in school, it should show up." And it sure did on her birthday. And so again, thank you to the folks at our school who make that happen. I'd also like to thank Mr. Hagerty for bringing up gun safety. It's something that we've talked about more than a little bit, and I read a piece right after the incident that you mentioned, and someone wrote a beautiful piece noting that when this happened, I'm a Gen Xer, and so a young adult, the first school shooting we had, and so many of us thought that was a one-off. There was no way today that we would have thought that we'd be talking about this with the level of consistency, concern, and higher urgency. And so, like my colleagues, we will continue to speak into the need for us to all note our role as a community of promoting gun safety, promoting community accountability, and seeing this as our issue, not an individual issue. So thank you both for lifting that up. To that end, when we think about what happens in our schools and how we create school community, it continues to be for me, again, all these years later, one of the best things of going in our schools. And so I also was in our school, one of our schools on 9/11, and to your point, watching our students, being taught about it, recognizing it and acknowledging. And this is the, a few years ago, I sat here talking about this, and I had a student, for the first time, it was the first student I heard ask the question of why we talk about it. This year, I felt a great sense of pride in listening to our students, being able to reflect on why this was a day of importance to us. So thank you to all of our educators who, and families who are investing in ensuring that our students know their history. So on Saturday, I learned, I actually learned a piece of history that I did not have, and I brought this pamphlet, I forgot to give it to Ms. Allen, because she is the keeper both mentally but also physically of all of our history in Wake County public schools. She has a rich knowledge, if you don't know this about Ms. Allen. But I had the opportunity to learn about Dr. Nicholas Franklin Roberts, who actually has a building at Shaw University, so I knew he was a stall, a giant in education. But what I did not know, that he was the first African-American to be appointed to the Wake County, Wake School Board in 1897. And so one of the things that I said at the unveiling of the marker in his hometown A.C. Board, North Carolina, was, one, it's history that I didn't know, and, two, it was a reminder to me, it was an educator who did all the work, a history teacher from Nash County, who did all the work to acknowledge Dr. Roberts for his work. And many of you will know Congressman Scott, who is a member of Congress from Virginia, it's his great-grandfather, so it was also amazing to see both the legacy of his political prowess, because he also was an alderman in the city of Raleigh, but the way that that has continued in his family. But there was also a large number of folks who were educators as well in his family. So one of the things that I think every one of us said who spoke at the commemoration on Saturday is, this is why our history is important, to both, as Ms. Caulfield noted, to both ensure that we're aware of our scars and the things that we have toiled over, but also of the successes. And I personally, I immediately, you know, sent this to everybody I knew, like, who knew in the 1900s that African America was on a large city school board like Wake County? And so it was great to be with his family and the community to acknowledge that certainly I sit in this seat as the third African-American on our school board of a merged school district in 48 years, the third black person to sit on this board. So I certainly always knew that I stood on the shoulders of giants, but this was an amazing reminder of the number of giants and the legacy that we do have. And I also got to share that with my amazing friends in Garner, which is a great lead-in to Chris Tuttle, who is the media specialist, or librarian, as she still says, which I also still say, of South Garner High School, who, at the Greatness of Garner, which is an amazing event that the town of Garner, our two high schools, South Garner and Garner Magnet High School do, she did the legacy of literacy for the town of Garner. So all of our Garner schools are represented on the Chronicles of Garner, which you may have heard me talk about, and its storytelling, its podcasts, is ensuring that our students are interviewing and talking and hearing orators in their community learn about their history. And so to that, they've done a lot around literacy, but they gave free books in partnership with Wake Up and Read, so they gave over 1,000 books on Friday night before, as many of you know, Friday Night Lights is one of my favorites, so before the Garner, South Garner game, and they give a little bowl away for the winner. Last year, South Garner won, this year, congratulations Garner for winning the football game. But it was amazing to see on a Friday night where there was bouncy houses and music and ICs, that kids were literally coming over, thumbing through the books. And so that was for me a reminder that truly it is up to us to create the legacy for our students and to continue to invest in their literacy. So thank you to all the folks in Garner who made it possible, the Parade of Excellence, all of the schools participated in, and thank you to Mr. Xavier Wallace McGraw, who is also a Thomasville Bulldog like myself, and his family was there, so I got to meet some other Bulldogs. They were not at the Thomasville football game, which generally Bulldogs are always in Cusworth Stadium on Friday nights, which is our stadium in Thomasville, but they joined Xavier at South Garner, because it truly is a testament of the commitment of our educators who show up, not just for their schools, but for their entire community. So thanks to everyone who was invested there. Along with Friday Night Lights, Willow Spring High School, which I was not at their game because I was at the Garner game, but congratulations to Willow Spring High School. This is their first senior class, and they won their first conference game against Southeast Raleigh High School. So they're 2-2, but still very exciting, because this is their first senior year. And then I got to meet a freshman, who's actually my daughter, it's, the world is so small, you all. It's my daughter's college roommate's brother was moved up, yes, who was moved up from JV at Willow Spring to varsity on Friday night. So again, we are literally like, at this point, one degree of separation, not six degrees of separation. So congratulations to Willow Spring High School on their first conference win, and I know that there'll be many more exciting to go. And lastly, so having sat here for a while, I've clearly visited all my schools multiple times, but I'd be remiss if I didn't speak to a new principal at North Garner. And this is a story that I've heard from a few educators in Wake County, but Ms. Register is from a small town like myself, and she started as a bus driver and is now the new proud principal of North Garner Middle School. And those are the stories that remind us of where you start isn't where you finish, and what a mighty story she has to share with her students. And so it was great to be in the company, and thank you, Ms. Register. She is not new to our district, she served very short time as an assistant principal at South Garner High School, but is now the new proud principal of North Garner Middle School, and her story is truly one that I think, I could already see the changes happening in the building. And I got to go into their very nice zen den, which is also new. I'd like to share all the things for our educators who listen, because I think they're probably the only people who are listening. There was a new thing that I saw over the lights, that they created like a little cloud silhouette over the lights to create their zen den where students can go for calming, and there was a student in there doing her work, and I asked her what she thought, and she was like, "I wasn't having a good day, but by the time I leave here by lunch, I'll be having a good day." So just a reminder of what seems to be small and insignificant to the people who do this every day is monumental for our students and our families. So thank you for the visit to North Garner, and again, congratulations, Ms. Register. Thank you, Mr. Hagerty.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson-Hossler. So at this point on our agenda, you all have seen the meeting agenda. Is there a motion at this time?
So moved.
We have a motion for adoption of the committee agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Waters. All in favor of approval of the meeting agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the agenda is approved, and we move on. So the next item on the agenda is the public comment portion. Before we begin, we need to remind everyone of some common courtesies and some basic rules surrounding the public comment period. Now, I'll read out the specified policy language. We read it every meeting. I know it just kind of speeds by at this point, but I do want to speak just a minute personally, because if everyone follows the rules, everyone will be given the opportunity to speak, and that's important, especially as, you know, we're celebrating Constitution Day. Standing up in front of everyone requires a lot of courage, it requires a lot of preparation, and whether you agree or disagree with a speaker, they and this forum need to be treated with respect. So please, no interruptions, no booing, no snickering. I won't go through all the associated noises we've heard over some weeks. And again, even if someone gives a great speech, if you cheer over them or if you talk over them, then everyone can't hear them, and that takes away from their time. So please, one speaker will be recognized at the podium at one time, okay? That's an important rule, that's for safety. Only one person can stand at the podium unless we have a young student who's accompanied by a parent or a guardian, or if you have someone who needs physical assistance. Please respect this process. And again, please do not, please do not interrupt speakers, or you will be asked to leave. Only the recognized speaker may comment, and only during their allotted time. Other comments may not be directed at other speakers, at other staff, or at the board, only those who are speaking in public comment. A breach of decorum could lead to expulsion from the meeting. Thank you. And now here's the canned language you've heard every meeting. We now move on to the public comment period. Speakers commenting on items on the night's agenda will be heard before speakers commenting on other topics. All other speakers will be heard in the order of sign-up. If the public comment portion of the agenda exceeds 30 minutes, public policy states that the board chair reserves the right to conduct other board business before inviting the remaining speakers to the podium. Members of the public are welcome to offer comments or criticism directed at substantive ideas, actions, or procedures of the board and individual board members. The laws and policies of North Carolina do provide that issues or concerns involving individual personnel or individual student matters are confidential, and therefore they're not appropriate for the public comment settings. Those offering comments to the board, including students, may discuss issues and matters of general concern. Concerns related to personnel issues or student matters can be addressed through other applicable WCPSS personnel procedures, the grievance policy, other applicable policies. In the interest of maintaining civility and decorum, speakers are encouraged to address their comments to the Board of Education and to refrain from personal attacks and insults directed at the board, individual board members, staff, or members of the general public. And again, that includes everyone in this room tonight. Please, remain at the podium during your speaking time. Any materials you wish to share with the board should be handed to Board Attorney Rod Malone either before or after your comments. They will be entered into our official record of our meeting, and they will be distributed to all board members. During the public comment period, you may speak up to three minutes. Please note the microphones are adjustable. When the green light at the podium will illuminate, showing that your three minutes has begun, it will tick down, a yellow light will light up when it has an audible tone when there are 30 seconds left. When the speaking time is up, you will see a red light, and you'll hear an audible tone. Your time will be finished, please conclude, please conclude your statement. Speakers are asked to respect the time limit and speak no more than the three minutes. You may choose to speak for less time. And because that was about three pages, my computer timed out, and so I have to pull up the list. I apologize to our first student, Rowan, I can't remember your last name, so I need to look it up, or if one of my board members can help me. Rowan Rustewitz?
Yes.
Rowan Rustewitz. Rowan Rustowitz, thank you. Please come up to the board, and I'll have the next person ready by their time to speak. Thank you, Rowan.
I will never forget the looks my teachers gave me. Oh, never mind, actually. I will forget. For a moment. Ladies and gentlemen of the Wake County School Board, it pains me to be back here again, fighting once again for my rights. But I will keep fighting until I can freely be myself and exist peacefully as myself. Throughout the past years, me and my peers' well-being has been jeopardized countless times for no valid reason. This summer in particular has seen an influx of legislature directly aimed at punishing transgender students. While I doubt that you can do anything about the fact that I can no longer play on the sports team of my choice, or that I can get the affirming, or that I can no longer get the affirming healthcare that I deserve, I believe that you can do something to ensure the safety of me and my transgender peers within my schools. I'm talking about SB 49, a transphobic bill disguised as a parental bill of rights, appropriately nicknamed in North Carolina "Don't Say Gay" Bill. This bill promotes forced outing of queer students, erasure of LGBTQ+ topics in school curriculums, and generally eliminates any safety and support that our teachers have to offer. Governor Roy Cooper stated in his veto that this bill would scare teachers into silence by injecting fear and uncertainty into classrooms, and he was right. The people who pushed this bill have not seen the impact it has had on our classrooms. Sure, teachers still try to foster a positive environment, but this is overshadowed by the fact that they are scared of any repercussions. I will never forget the looks my teachers gave me when I told them that I preferred the name Rowan. Something that was so simple just three months ago was now almost feared. And every class period, I was reminded that the lawmakers of my state cared more about whether or not I was a girl or a boy than about my safety and education. My teachers told me every time that I would have to ask my parents for permission to change my name. Maximilian would have to ask for permission to go by Max. Madison couldn't go by Maddie, and I couldn't go by Rowan. It's very clear who the target of this bill was, and I promise you, it was not Joseph who goes by Joe. By mandating parental permission, the schools were no longer a safe space for us. I was lucky enough to have been blessed with parents who support me enough to let me go by Rowan, but a lot of my friends were not. A lot of my friends were born with parents who would rather lose their child than support their child. And with this law, changing your name risk getting kicked out, or even worse. But by giving up our names, we give up our freedom and who we are. A name is one of the few things that we have just to ourselves. My name is Rowan Rustovich. Rowan for the tree whose roots are deep ingrained in my culture, and Rustovich, my father's name, an homage to my family that I left behind when we immigrated here. Each name is a story, and by allowing this bill to continue, you are taking away not only my story, but the story of my peers. Thank you.
Thank you, Rowan. Next up, we have Charlie Pine. Charlie Pine.
Can I start?
Hmm?
Okay, I'm also here to talk about the SB 49 bill, but specifically line A5 of section 115(c) 76.45, which states, "The governing body of a public school unit shall adopt procedures to notify a parent prior to any changes in the name or pronoun used for a student in school records or by school personnel." I'm talking about the misinterpretation of this line. Teachers are not required to get permission from a parent. They're just supposed to notify them. But in all of my periods, when I asked to go by Charlie instead of my birth name, I had to get a parent to sign a form, except for my law and justice class because she actually read the law. She only notified my parents of the name change and didn't have to get any signatures. The permission aspect is putting more trans youth at danger because some parents won't kick their kids out because they're kids, but they won't give permission. If they're just notified, it's okay for some people, but even this is endangering the lives of many youth across the whole state, not just this county. Having to be outed forcefully to your parents because of what a lawmaker says is not something that anyone should have to go through. It's, like Rowan said, it's very obvious who this bill was targeted at, not the people who want to use nicknames by teachers. It's really scary being a trans youth, even with supportive parents, knowing that at any moment, my rights could be taken away, and I could get hurt for just wanting to use a different name. I feel like it should be more known that the many teachers are misinterpreting this law and thinking they have to get a signed permission slip when they do not, because it is hurting our youth. It just needs to be a notification, like an email. And I have told my teachers this, and they still don't believe me, so I think someone higher up needs to tell them. Thank you.
Thank you, Charlie. Our next speaker is Candace Laughinghaus. Candace Laughinghaus.
Good evening. Good evening. Well, first, thank you for this opportunity to be here. This is my first time here. Also, my daughter's first time actually being enrolled in Wake County public schools. But really quickly, just found out about this meeting today, but this is of urgency because I have three daughters. Specifically, I'm speaking of my oldest daughter, that we are going back and forth for trying to place her in the proper math programs, and it's clear from transcripts from the previous school, and upon looking at the policies on school, excuse me, classroom assignments, that she should be placed somewhere that is fitting to her academic advancement. Instead, I'm being met from her principal and others that because the math class was called something else at a prior school, that's actually local, she was at the New School Montessori Center in Ollie Springs, and therefore she's being placed in a remedio for her math class. And I don't know what to do, but to come here, I have reached out to board members, because this is of urgency, being that this is a young African American girl who is excelling in math, and I've also chosen to stick with Wake County public schools, even after she was accepted with scholarship to a school Ravenscroft. And I had friends that said, "Stick with Magnet Schools," and so I had faith in that, but now we're just at a wall where I've been told that there's nothing that can be done, despite what I've read in the policies, that they can, there's flexibility, there's, I've asked for, excuse me, I've asked for evaluations, and I'm just not getting anything further. So I need some sort of resolution to this. We're four weeks in, and I do not feel that she should be penalized by technicality, and nor should she have to experience a steamrolling by a policy that's not helping her, because otherwise, then this is one of the reasons why many parents like myself, which I am not doing, pull their children out into these charter schools, and is not supportive of her advancement. And I'm having to deal with this three times. So I would like some sort of knowledge on what I can do, and not a continued back and forth with emails, because it even took like 10 months for them to get in the schools that they were in now. So, thank you.
Thank you. And Ms. Laughinghaus, if you'd like to remain after the public comment period, we can find someone on staff who you can meet with here while you're at the district office-
Thank you.
-to help you with this issue.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, on our public comment list, is Ginny Clayton. Is Ms. Clayton here? After Ms. Clayton will be Nate Branscombe.
Good evening. I'm a teacher at Carey High School and a GSA club advisor. When we came back in August, everyone at my school had questions about SB 49, what it meant, how to comply, and what to tell students and families. Our consensus was to say as little as possible, and that silence has left room for anxiety to grow. I hear students wondering, you just did also, whether school is a safe place for them. They worry that any teachers who might hold personal anti-LGBTQ sentiments will feel emboldened by this law to treat them badly. They worry what legislation might be coming next. The very existence of this law and the uncertainty surrounding it have cast a shadow over my campus. It's been a distraction at best and caused extreme fear at worst. These emotions are not good for teenagers whom we expect to focus on learning. I've read the law, and I don't envy you, your task of interpreting it, of filling its many gaps in language with local policy consistent with its spirit, because the spirit of this law is a problem. When I read it, I didn't find anything positive, nurturing, or student-first. I do not see alignment between this law and Wake County values. I'm a 16-year veteran teacher. I'm National Board certified. I was a Wake County Teacher of the Year finalist last year, so I feel comfortable in sharing with you my knowledge of best educational practices. Those practices are student-first. I've interacted with many LGBTQ students, both as a GSA advisor and as a classroom teacher. I have never encouraged a student to keep their sexual orientation or gender identity a secret. Why? Because as someone who is gay, I know that being out is good. Staying in the closet is stressful, and being open reduces that stress. But on the flip side, I have never encouraged a student to share their identity with others before they were ready. I have never outed a student. Here's what I do when a student comes out to me. I ask questions and listen. I might invite the student to imagine how coming out might go, what they would say, what the family would say, and how they would feel afterward. I let the student consider these things and make their own choices. How do I know to do this? I think of my professional code of ethics and standards, the ones that talk about student safety, about creating a welcoming and diverse learning environment. The spirit of those standards guides me, and I would encourage you to let it guide you as well as you implement policy. The spirit of SB 49, on the other hand, troubles me very deeply. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Clark. Next speaker is Nate Branscombe, followed by Andrew Branch.
Thank you all for your time. My name is Nate Branscombe. I am the chapter president for the 100 Black Men of Triangle East. But before I get into that, I will also share that I am the parent of two Wake County students, one of which is, I think, saying to you all earlier today through NLO, and one of the choirs that he participates in. And then last time I was here, my daughter, who is a seventh grader at East Millbrook, was awarded for making a video about bullying. All right? I'll also share real quickly that it's, I'm a testament to how great Wake County schools is, because if you heard me sing and you saw me act, you would understand that it's not through me that they get any of their talents. The 100 Black Men of Triangle East Saturday Academy is a transformational educational initiative that seeks to empower and uplift young black male students in the Triangle region of North Carolina. The academy is a testament of the organization's commitment to nurturing the potential of youth, providing them with the tools, the knowledge necessary for success in academics and beyond. Held every other Saturday during the school year... This is where I should probably wear my glasses. Held every other Saturday during the school year, we offer a comprehensive and holistic approach to education, focusing not only on the traditional subject like mathematics and literacy, but also on character development and life skills. Through engaging workshops, mentoring programs, and enrichment activities, the academy strives to instill values such as leadership, discipline, and responsibility in its students. At the core of Saturday Academy's success is the dedicated group of mentors, accomplished professionals, and community leaders from various fields. These mentors serve as role models and guides, offering guidance and support to the students as they navigate the challenges of their educational journey. Through personalized attention and a nurturing environment, the academy aims to increase the academic achievement, boost self-confidence, and foster a sense of pride in one's heritage. By investing in the education of young black students, the 100 Black Men of Triangle East Academy is shaping the future for those individuals that want to contribute to society. I will also share that as a member for the 100 Black Men, these are some of the best guys that I spoke with in the Triangle. They actually pay to volunteer to mentor someone else's youth. Funds that go to providing a free Saturday Academy so that none of the youth have to pay, and also for providing scholarships after they matriculate from high school. These are educators, these are financial professionals, these are senior VPs at some of the largest organizations. The one thing that they all have in common is the willingness to take the little time they have out of their schedule to help someone else's child. I'll also share that one of your previous members, Keith Sutton, was one of our members. All right? I'm happy to share more about the program, but I will also highlight that we have our first informational for youth in grade 6 through 12 this Saturday at NC State's campus, and this is my red light, so thank you all for your time.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Branscombe. Next up is Andrew Branch, followed by Mark Peterson. Good evening, Mr. Branch.
I'm the dinner table guy from last time. I commend my words from last time to you. We need to stop gaslighting each other with euphemisms, be frank, and acknowledge the fundamental question at issue. Listen to this and play it back. Do my feelings tell me who I am, or does who I am tell me how to interpret my feelings? That's it, ponder the implications. What if a depressed 13-year-old girl uncomfortable with her body in the newfound male gaze is just a depressed girl uncomfortable with her body in the newfound male gaze? This is zero sum. SB 49, if it had failed, the answer would still be no. Male and female are not negotiable, and wars have been fought over less. If you type in a search engine the terms grooming his successor, you'll see news stories about everything from CEOs to quarterbacks. The term grooming does not inherently carry a pedophilic blood libel. The question is, what are you encouraging? What are you teaching children to be open to? The very air kids breathe already teaches them to follow and indulge their feelings, to discover who they are. Do Wake employees in Word or Rainbow preach removing stigma, normalizing certain self-expressions and exploration? In euphemisms or explicitly, progressives would teach a boy to grow up to be open to allowing other males to violate him. And why are the gender stereotypes once scorned by feminists now valorized? Gender is not separable from sex any more than a man becomes a woman when he washes the dishes, or a woman a man when she climbs a ladder to change a light bulb. Misled parents of toddlers are now asking what their son's favorite color means. And kids are asking if the normal discomfort of adolescent body changes actually means they're trans. Some questions do not need to be asked. A penguin does not ask if it can fly. It's not liberating to tell a penguin she can fly and have her spend years of her life trying. That's not liberation, that's a kind of bondage. The emperor has no clothes. An awkward teenage boy with autism who likes pink and struggles to connect with male peers is normal. Jesus Christ, not me, is the living judge who said to love your enemies. He also quoted Genesis in Matthew 19, saying literally like this, "Have you not read? He who created them in the beginning made them male and female." Listen to all that he says. And if you are here struggling with your identity, I plead with you, one day, remember those who didn't lie to you.
Thank you, Mr. Branch. Next up is Mark Peterson, followed by John Balog.
Two weeks ago, my comments to the board were interrupted by a man who protested the use of this sign. I don't want anyone to miss the irony of a man trying to censor a link to a website that features books that he thinks we're trying to censor. We're not trying to censor them, we want them restricted. SB 49 is intended to restrict some of these books. The man wore a T-shirt with the word "facts" printed on it, also ironic. The pep website is loaded with facts. There are over 100 book titles cited on the website that are by NC Code, described as harmful, sexually explicit, age inappropriate, or gender ideology, and distributed throughout the Wake County school system. This website also provides school location listings for each book, as well as examples of graphic images in the text is found in those books. Basically, some of these books, the content is so bad, it's literally like you could take a book out of an adult bookstore and rewrite it for a graphic novel, change the ages of the people engaged in the sex acts from adults to children. And now it's okay in public schools. That's where we are now. Over half the books found on this website were published in the past decade. During that time, the rate of teen suicide has increased. I think it's 70% higher. The academic performance has declined during that same period. Currently, the national rate of adults who identify as trans- Currently, the national rate of adults who identify as trans is 5%, 0.5%. During the past 10 years, that rate of teens identifying as trans has tripled. It's 1.4%. It's three times the national average of adults. How does this happen? Well, the range of books starts with a book like this, Worm Loves Worm. This is a favorite among the, you know, the trans story hour. This book was read here in front of the school board here recently by a woman who, you know, admits that she has this type of literature in her house. She has adult literature, and it's accessible to the children, but she's okay with that. But she also has two trans children. She's proving that grooming works.
Thank you. And I didn't want to interrupt your comments, Mr. Peterson, but please, if you can, I understand defending your comments, but if we could restrict referring to others, and I'll ask the same...
I did not mention any names. You know who I'm talking about, because she read the book.
I do.
But she also admits to having two trans children.
I do.
She has exceeded the national average tremendously.
Well, again, I did not want to interrupt your comments, and so I appreciate your thoughts on it. Thank you. If we could, and I, we're, this is not a public debate hour. And again, as I stated at the beginning, only those at the podium may speak. And I understand the desire to speak and wanting to clear something up, and we can talk about that after the conclusion of public comment. Okay? I understand exactly where you're coming from. And it is now time for Mr. Balog. Mr. Balog, I apologize for the interruption. If you need a minute, feel free to take it, and then you may begin your comments whenever you're ready.
So I get four minutes?
I appreciate the joke. Thank you, Mr. Balog.
Thank you for your time. Cobb County, Atlanta, School District Superintendent Chris Ragsdale was adamant during a Thursday board meeting this week that he would do his best to protect students from what he called pornographic material. I, as superintendent, will not knowingly allow children in the Cobb County School District to access lewd, vulgar, sexually explicit, obscene, or pornographic material. Let me be clear, anyone working in education who knowingly provides students with access to that material should not be in a position of educating other parents' children. This situation is about right and wrong, good and evil. There is no middle ground. You are either in favor of providing inappropriate material to children, or you're against it. I assure you, I am against it, says Chris. Bureaucrats in North Carolina want to change the law, which requires the teaching of abstinence-based sex health education. The law specifically requires that abstinence from sexual activity outside of marriage be taught as an expected standard of behavior for all school-aged children. Draft one of those standards doesn't mention marriage at all. Rather, the standards reflect the teaching of comprehensive sex education. Most is either written or endorsed by Planned Parenthood. So what exactly is the goal here in Wake County? Sex at 16, 14, 12? Let's address Planned Parenthood. That's an oxymoron. The International Planned Parenthood Federation, IPPF, World Health Organization, WHO, and United Nations are advancing children's exposure to sexuality on two fronts: promoting sex education that emphasizes teaching consent for sex and the portrayal of children and young people as sexual beings with sexual rights. The program instructs childrens under 10 that sexual activity may be part of different types of relationships, including dating, marriage, or commercial sex work, among others. I wish I was making this up. The IPPF organization offers K-5 education standards that say children have a right not to be touched, and children should be prepared to say no when uncomfortable. But by the sixth grade, instead of teaching children to say no, the term consent is used, promoting the idea that it's acceptable to have sex with children who consent. Can't happen here. I'm not making this up. It's all easy to find. I'd like to close, so I'm gonna do something different. I'd like to close with a short prayer. Father God, these are trying times. Before us is the education of our precious children, a daunting task. We have strayed from education into agendas. We lift up Tyler, Lindsay, Chris, Sam, Lynn, Tara, Wing, Monica, Randy, and Cheryl. Grant them your wisdom to make decisions that best protect your children. Give them clear guidance and a clear conscience. Thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. Balog. Next, we have Dwayne Hanson. Dwayne Hanson, followed by Becky Lou Hobbs. Good evening, Mr. Hanson.
Hello. I'm representing a Common Sense Parents Coalition in support of the new Parents' Bill of Rights Bill, known as SB 49, which is now in effect. My wife taught school for 16 years, and I substituted here in Wake County Public School System for 10 years. We love and support 85% of the good, hard-working teachers, teaching the three Rs day after day. The new law indirectly addresses five fatal flaws in transgenderism ideology that continues to be promoted in our schools. Flaw number one: Contrary to transgender ideology and rhetoric, the design of the human body proves that there are only two genders. Nature's design shows that humans can only produce male sperm and female eggs, resulting in two distinct genders. We are not built like worms. This has been the case since the Stone Age. Flaw number two: Transgenderism must assume two fixed genders. A kid must know what a boy and a girl are to recognize the transgender disorder and their fantasies. There is a civil war among the homosexual community, because if the Ts get their way, the Ls, Gs, and Bs don't exist. Flaw number three: Changing biology instead of addressing the mind is not a rational solution or answer. In other psychological dysphoria or disorder cases, individuals are treated with therapy, not cross-sex hormones or breast stenulation or genital mutilation surgery. We hope the $1 or $2 million that you just contracted to third-party health companies for therapy will prove and provide many positive returns for those troubled students. We cannot change our DNA, but we can change our thoughts and behavior. When anorexics falsely think they are overweight, we don't say, "Hey, you're right. Let me get you some liposuction." No biological male has ever experienced being a biological female, or vice versa. It's only in their thoughts. Flaw number four: Sex is not assigned at birth. Sex is discovered at birth by doctors and nurses. And there's no ambiguity in 99.9% of birth cases. Flaw number five: There's no basis for transgender rights. Natural rights come from a higher authority, not from whimsical government declarations, a small percentage of political activists, teachers' unions, or really confused teens and activist librarians. Amputating healthy sex organs does not find support in natural law, morality, or common sense. As school board members, your sworn duty and responsibilities to enforce the Parents' Bill of Rights law to protect our young grandkids from sexual harassment, from homosexual groomers lurking in our schools, unions, PTAs, libraries, and Moms for Porn groups. None of you are trained doctors or psychiatrists. As grandparents, we want our kids to be scholars, not sex experts.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Becky Lou Hobbs, followed by Nicole Baldridge. Ms. Lou Hobbs, I wanted to thank you for the state, or for the Constitution booklets that you provided last time.
Actually, that was Julie that provided them.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
But yes, my name's Becky Lou Hobbs. I'm a Wake County resident, mom, and now I'm chapter chair of Moms for Liberty of Wake County. A mom concerned about her rights as parents and the declining quality of our education provided to the children. As you're aware, we have a new law called the Parents' Bill of Rights. I'm coming to ask, again, why have you not addressed it? Why do you continue to hide information from parents? And why is there an assumption that parents are abusive? Why do you want to continue to expose young children to gender ideology and sexual activity? All of these things and more are addressed in this new law. It's common sense. It codifies the fundamental rights of parents. The school board's not the parent, the superintendent's not the parent, principals, teachers, social workers, they're not the parent either. Stop the delay tactics and follow the law. And there's something else some members have chosen to ignore, and that was Constitution and Citizenship Day. I was very pleased to hear a couple actually speak about it today. According to Wake County policy and federal law, it's required that this day be observed and commemorated. But before tonight, the board has never mentioned Constitution and Citizenship Day. And unfortunately, following the board's leadership, schools have done the same. From the parents I've talked to and my own personal experience, they've done little more than just watch a video or fill out a worksheet, just to check off the box. And I'll remind you that 100% of the students live in America and benefit from the Constitution. So despite what has been said as a precedence from the board, in honor of Constitution and Citizenship Day, Moms for Liberty Wake County distributed 13,000 pocket constitutions to middle schools across eight county, across the county, to give to eighth graders, so they can have the Constitution and have it available to read and study. Read and study. That brings me to the school progress reports. There's been some attention and some praise for the progress, but is it really praiseworthy? Although better than the previous year, the average reading proficiencies for third through fifth graders was still at only about 60%. So that means four out of 10 third through fifth graders are not proficient at grade level. Results are similar for students entering middle school. So you do understand 60% is a failing grade, right? How can you be proud that 40% of students cannot read at grade level? How can these students continue to learn if they cannot read? And how can they learn if they can't get to school? Some students are still having problems getting to school because of the bus situation. So I ask you, please, obey the law, get back to the basics, stop wasting our children's education time on the latest social justice fad. Get back to focusing on reading, writing, math, science, history. Get back to providing our children the quality education that they deserve. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Nicole Baldridge, followed by Jen Labs. Good evening, Ms. Baldridge.
Hi. Thank you so much for letting me speak. My name is Nicole. I stand here before you as a part of Public School Strong. I have three children, two of whom are currently in Wake County schools, one who's too young. She's in preschool. I was a public school teacher for 14 years. I left the education profession, much to my dismay, the year after the pandemic. It was far too much. The requirements, the pay, it was too much. I literally could not support my family on the salary, and I realized that is not on the board. I know that Wake County Schools does everything that they can to find additional funding to pay teachers. I want to talk about everything, there's so many things, but at one point I want to make, well, two. One, what is being proposed in the state budget is not a 7% raise. It is a 7% raise on average over two years. Teachers like myself, if I had stayed in education, would not see a raise for the next 10 years. From years 15 to years 25, there is zero increase in pay, according to the budget, and at all. So from year 15, year 16, year 17, I would have the exact same pay. That is why veteran teachers are leaving. We cannot afford to stay in the profession. We cannot afford to feed our families, we cannot afford to send them to daycare, we cannot stay. And trust me when I say this, it hurts, because I love teaching. I love children, and I want to be in those classrooms. 14 years as a public school teacher. 10 of them teaching in high school, three in Wake County schools. I lived in California before then, so I worked in Los Angeles Unified School District prior to moving to Wake County. And I will say, we were paid significantly more. It was a huge pay cut to come here. But I did it, because I value education, and I am here, because I value education. The other thing I want to talk about is, I was a science teacher. For the purposes of science education, specifically focusing on sex education, abstinence-only programs do not work. There is evidence, lots of evidence, that in states and counties that do only abstinence-only programs, teen pregnancy rates are significantly higher. Teaching students that they have a right to say no, that they can have access to contraceptives, that sexual transmitted diseases are real, protects them. Knowledge is power. If we don't give our students knowledge, they can't make the right decisions. They cannot protect themselves. Teaching students grade-level appropriate how to say no is extremely important.
Thank you, Ms. Baldridge. I appreciate it. Next up is Jen Labs, followed by Colleen Miller.
Hello, my name is Jennifer. I'm speaking to you as a mother, spouse of a teacher, and a proud member of Public School Strong. As we start the school year, I wanted to say thank you for all the efforts of our public schools and staff to welcome students and families. I observed yard signs, intentional staff spirit, welcome events that took incredible time and efforts to pull off. The first impression as a student walks into a classroom is so important. It sets the stage for the school year. What do you prefer to be called? My middle name is Erin. It's androgynous. You can have an Erin as a boy or a girl. So if I were called, preferred to be called Erin in the school, would a school teacher risk being disciplined under the new legislation that's come about? I worry, because setting the stage really does require respect, safety, and a connection, and that encourages children to really thrive in a school classroom. And in our school classrooms right now, we have high schools with teachers that have 30 to 40 students in each of their classes, and they may have a planning period that they're asked to sub another school because teachers are out. It's a big ask. But if you're setting the stage for the school year, and you have that many children, and you're going down a list, if you don't, if you don't notify a parent because of their Parents' Rights Bill that is out there right now, I just, I worry about teachers. I worry about an employee of the state who encourages, coerces, or attempts to withhold information to his or her parent may be subject to disciplinary action. That's a big ask of these teachers that are being asked to do an awful lot right now, just to set the stage to create a safe, welcoming, inviting environment where they can learn and thrive. Please have our school staff and teachers in mind when creating policies in response to this legislation. My daughter brought home a permission slip in an elective that she is reading, a great book's elective. I was a little sad. I was thankful because of intrigue, what she's going to be reading, but I was a little sad, thinking maybe that teacher made me sign that because she was worried about her job and what would happen. Please support our public schools and continue to do everything we can. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Colleen Miller, followed by Weeta Watson. And again, before we start, Ms. Miller, one person at the podium at a time, please. One person at the podium at the time.
Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. I'm gonna do something a little different. I'm gonna start out by reading from an obscene book that I've found in public schools, one of many, and you can actually go to this website, and you can read this book for yourself. And I'm, just a couple excerpts. "The night seems endless, and I'm very tired. He has the lights on, all of them. It makes the room so hot. I have to touch his penis and stroke it up and down. He calls this jacking off. Sometimes he wants me to suck on it, too. I hate it so much, it tastes disgusting. I'm afraid the white stuff, which is, which he has said is called cum while getting my mouth. Sometimes when Philip stays up for days and days and goes on a run, which is drugs, he talks about bringing Nancy in to party with us. I do not like the sound of that at all. How could I look at her the same way if I had to have sex with her, too? Philip also wants to watch his dog Caesar have sex with me. He says a dog's penis is not as long as his, and it wouldn't hurt me as bad. Pretty disgusting stuff." That book is in several Wake County schools, as well as many others with the similar content. I struggle to understand why any decent human being or person would insist on providing books such as this to children. books such as this to children. Adults are meant to protect kids, not expose them to materials that are harmful. Unfortunately, educators in our public schools are preying on innocent children with books and other materials that are sexually graphic depicting sex acts between children or between children and an adult. This is a grooming technique used by pedophiles and sex traffickers. I have young grandchildren in a Raleigh school and want to protect them from the perversion being perpetrated on our public schools. Why do you continue to approve the purchase and dissemination of books that violate North Carolina obscenity laws? Schools are also confusing children with the unscientific idea that gender is non-binary. Books about alternate genders have flooded our public school libraries, even at the kindergarten level. The frequency of genital ambiguity or intersex are rare. One recent study reported one in 2,000 to 1 in 4,500. So why are schools confusing children and teaching them a fantasy? That they can be any gender they choose and change at any time? Let me remind you, gender and sexuality are not fluid concepts. Please stop wasting valuable time and resources on harmful materials instructions that promote sexual activity in minors and gender theory. With depression, anxiety, and suicide in the young at an all-time high, we must commit to protecting them, and let's provide the education they deserve so they can experience a fulfilling and productive life. Thank you."
Thank you, Ms. Miller. The next speaker is Weeta Watson, who will be followed by Stacy Campbell. Good evening, Ms. Watson.
Thank you. I express my gratitude for your decision to await guidance from the North Carolina School Boards Association before implementing the Parents' Bill of Rights. I'm also pleased to learn that North Carolina State Superintendent of Education Katherine Truitt agrees with this decision and has asked legislators to set the date it goes into effect as January the 1st. In reviewing the news, I found no consensus. From reporters, I heard them say that the law is expansive and vague, to supporters who threaten lawsuits against teachers. For example, as a parent of a child in the North Carolina public school system, I'm concerned about the impact this law will have on my child's education. I urge you to delay implementation until there is more time to study the potential impacts of the law. I'm a teacher in the North Carolina school system. I'm concerned about the impact this law will have on my ability to teach. I urge you to delay implementation until there is more time to develop training for teachers and on the new requirements of the law. The NC Values Coalition say they will monitor whether the schools comply with the requirement. If not, parents can file grievances and sue if they feel the rights have been violated under the law. Delaying implementation only deprives parents of their legal rights to know what's being taught to children in schools and to direct their mental and physical health for their children. Every school system has an attorney on contract that can form their own interpretations of the law. Parents have the right to expect the school to comply with the law. If school employees won't comply with the law, you're gonna see some lawsuits filed by parents. If the law will hopefully get rogue teachers from under wraps. A policy in public schools that parents will not be notified if a child changes the name in which the student is called by the school personnel is to establish a system based on lies to parents. Parents are going to get a lot of notification from multiple teachers to ensure that teachers aren't putting themselves at risk of breaking the law by calling Allison "Ally" without letting their parents know. Opponents to the law say it could lead to LGBTQ students being outed to parents who won't accept them. Do we want teachers to call 911 or call their parents first? We know that the support of pro-public-school advocates, including our state superintendent, is welcomed. We support your decision to be deliberate more than hasty. Well-developed policies and procedures aligned with the law, including professional development for employees and programs for parents and the community, are necessary to improve clarity, consistency, and integrity of implementation. In closing, Superintendent Truitt said she hopes an extension will be included when the General Assembly releases its budget, which is expected this week. The General Assembly seems to be quite quick on deadlines, aren't they?
Thank you, Ms. Watson. Our next speaker is Stacy Campbell, followed by Nathaniel Dibble. Is Ms. Campbell here? If Ms. Campbell has stepped out, we can return to her later. We'll next hear from Nathaniel Dibble, followed by Jeremy Richer. Good evening.
Good evening to the board. It's nice seeing all you here again. I want to start by first thanking those of you who have shown interest in the issues we brought up, especially in regards to SB 49. Your concern is appreciated, and I promise you, we see it and we remember it. Last time we were all here, I spoke about the horrendous impact that the Don't Say Gay law would have on the youth in our schools. I spoke about how students will be facing decreasing mental health, increasing harassment, and increasing uncertainty in their safety, all amid an already-existing mental health crisis. I spoke about how, as a result, the board must take concrete action to protect them. Since that last meeting, I've spoken with teachers in our Public School Strong circle, and alarm bells have been going off and been saying to me that I also need to be focusing on teachers as well, because all these issues that I described that harm students also harm teachers just as much, if not more. We all saw how pre-K teacher was treated last year, chased out of the county they taught at simply for showing flashcards of a non-traditional family. We're going to have that same exact thing happen again and again and again. While some teachers are immediately complying with the new law out of fear of their jobs, others would like to resist and continue making their classrooms an inclusive space. To do this, they're waiting for official guidance from the state and Wake County Boards of Education. Every day that they await guidance, they feel the stress that comes with not knowing what's going to happen to them. They don't know if they'll be fired. They don't know if they'll be sued by a parent or a hate group. Their teaching licenses may even be at risk for all they know. They don't know what consequences they will face, and they don't know if they're gonna face those alone or if they're gonna face those with your support. Furthermore, for our educators that are actually a part of the queer community, they don't know if even them even existing in the classroom is a violation of the new law. Are they allowed to have a picture of their same-sex or gender-queer partner on their desk, or is that too sexually explicit as well? What about a small pride flag or a pronoun pin? Or literally any number of objects and symbols that represent their lived and mutable experiences? The question is, will they be persecuted for truthfully expressing who they are? They don't know the answers to that, and no matter how involved we may be, we don't know the answers either. I recognize that you guys also don't know the answers to some of those questions. However, it needs to be known that teachers are being forced into a mindset of confusion and paranoia. We are inviting that to happen as long as teachers go without guidance. You can disrupt that negative mindsets of our educators, and I ask you, please do so. And since I also have time, I also want to elevate some comments from my peers, specifically about how the policy is currently being implemented in our schools, how it's not being implemented with cis students that wish to go by different nicknames, however, it is being implemented with trans students. Once again, I say that this is a result of the confusion, the intentional confusion that this law was supposed to cause, and you guys can solve that by simply postponing the date of implementation or by offering guidance to say otherwise.
Thank you, Nathaniel. Next up is Jeremy Richer, followed by Renee Suckel. Good evening.
Good evening. Hi, my name's Jeremy Richer. I live in Raleigh, and my kid goes to partnership. She loves her school so much. I just came to say thank you to the school board. Our school and our neighborhood are really grateful for the hard work that you do. We deeply appreciate it. We know it's not easy, and our schools are really good. There's ways they can be improved, but we deeply appreciate the work that you're doing. So I just wanted to say thank you, school board members, and thank you, Dr. Bridges. Please keep doing what you're doing.
Thank you. And our concluding speaker in public comment tonight will be Renee Suckel.
Before I speak, Mr. Hagerty, I have a request. Acknowledging that I have no intention of attacking anybody or even directly addressing the attack that was made upon me tonight, may I please have 30 seconds of extra time to address the false claims that were made and my feelings on them?
Unfortunately, I can't give you that time based on the rules of public comment, but I will hear those individually, and we will talk about the issue further.
Okay. I will begin by saying that I don't know the genders or the sexualities of all three of my children at this point. That is their business. It is their business to share. It is not anybody else's business, ever, not including me, to share. What was spoken today of my children was a lie, but to be very clear, if they end up trans, if they end up non-binary, if they end up gay, straight, bi, or anywhere on the spectrum of gender expression or gender belief, that is okay. They're my children, and I love them for who they are. So the fact that I am pointing out the lie has absolutely nothing to do with rejecting who they are and everything to do with pointing out that it is nobody's business but my child's, and it is absolutely not a stranger's to share to make political points. Now, on to what I was going to say. I've been advocating at the General Assembly since 2017, and the very first law that I fought about was one where I consistently went to legislators and said, "Hey, this law that you passed has this effect." And they said, "Gosh, I didn't mean to do that. I didn't know that was gonna happen." Another enduring theme I see at the legislature is grandstanding, where they will, in order to make a point or to hurt a specific group of people, they will lard a law with redundant or meaningless provisions that will either, as in the case of S49, forgive me, I'm not on my game tonight, will either redundantly list rights or restrictions that already exist or will be vaguely written, poorly written, and have unexpected effects. And later on, they'll go back and say, "Oops, we didn't mean to do that." And of course, now we are seeing that. The budget bill that was released just this afternoon includes provisions accommodating the "we didn't mean to do that" factor on S49, and in fact delays implementation of the law for months. But what I want to talk about is the prohibition on sex education in grades K3. K4, you'll have to look it up. My youngest child is in seventh grade. I clearly remember their elementary school years, and I can say with absolute certainty that none of my children received any sex education at all in school till fifth grade because that's the existing law. The provision of S49 that prohibits sexual instruction in grades K through 4 is redundant. It's another one of those ridiculous provisions stuffed into the law to lard it up to provide cover for the anti-trans animus that really animated the law. So I know you have capable legal help, but I would caution you against reading any new restrictions into that law when you implement it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Suckel. So after a long public comment period, it's now 7:30. I'd like to take a five-minute recess just to allow folks to clear out. Anyone who wants to take a break, bathroom or biological break, and then we'll resume with our agenda after that. Thank you.